All right, good evening, everybody. It is 6:05, and I apologize for the late start, but we are going to start tonight with a public hearing. This was set up as an avenue for folks to come and voice their opinions, positive, negative, indifferent, on the budget. So I will open that up at this time. I think the structure in which we will do this will be very similar to what we do for our public hearings. If we can sign them in the back, that would be awesome. Three minutes. This is a public hearing, not a public discussion, so the comments that you make to the council will be noted by the council, and then so on and so forth. But it won't be a back-and-forth dialogue if that's what you're expecting. I apologize, but that's not going to happen tonight. So, all right. So with that said, let's open this up, and since we have such a crowded room, I know exactly there's at least one person on it right now, Mr. David Johnson.
Oh, Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer.
Yeah.
Would you write it or no?
No.
All right. Fair enough. Welcome.
Hi, Jennifer Johnson, Ward Four. I am nearly two decades-long, frequent volunteer and occasional employee of the Waterville School District, and I just wanted to really encourage the council to support our school's budget. We are very underfunded, and we've got amazing employees doing amazing things every day with our most vulnerable population, where our kids cannot do things for themselves, and they are trusting that us, as the grown-ups that run their little lives, that we are going to do right by them. And providing an education for every student in the Waterville School District is not just a moral obligation, but a legal one. And so please support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty, anyone online?
No hands are raised.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Well, I'll say something to the same.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you. My name is Cassie Julia. I'm also Ward Four. Ward Four well-represented tonight. So I'm going to echo what Jen just said. I've always been a big proponent of the schools and fully funding them to the best extent. School Board does a pretty thorough job of vetting what they think they need, and I think they did a good job this year on the budget. So I would also encourage you to please support them. Now is not the time to be cutting any services or counselors or anything like that. I've been a sub in the schools for a while, and post-pandemic environment is very different than pre-pandemic. The kids need as much support as possible, and beyond that, the teachers and the admin staff need just as much support. And so whatever we can give them for tools for success is imperative. So I just would like to make that feeling, that sentiment known, and I hope that you enjoy passing the budget this year.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on the budget this evening?
I have a letter, I mean, an email that I got from a constituent of mine.
Perfect.
He actually wrote to Mr. Post, because I guess he didn't know me yet, so I haven't gotten around yet that far. Let me just read it to what he's written. "I am unable to attend the upcoming public hearing regarding the proposed budget, so I am voicing my views to you. I thoroughly enjoy living in Waterville. I see a growing and thriving community, which is comforting. The concern is the continued increase in spending and corresponding increase in property taxes. Spending must be controlled. The citizens, especially those on fixed incomes, cannot continue to be expected to absorb the increases year after year. Waterville has and continues to undergo economic growth, but the citizens do not seem to receive any benefit in terms of tax relief. Something must change. The council must hold the line on any tax increases. Difficult decisions must be made. Thank you for the time. Respectfully, Mr. Gary Frost."
Excellent. Thanks for reading that in. Anyone else?
We do have a hand raised online, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you. Let's bring them in.
Should I promote him just to talk?
Yeah.
This is Mr. Phil Bofia. Mr. Bofia, can you hear us okay? Can you hear us? We can't hear you.
Hello?
Hi there. We can hear you now. Go ahead with your comment, sir.
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can, Phil. You're all set.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello?
Can he hear us?
My phone's there.
Hello?
Letter it, Phil.
Hello?
He can't hear us.
Can you chat? Can you send something to the chat or no?
I have chat disabled.
Perfect.
Mr. Bofia, can you hear us now?
Hello? This thing.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello?
Can he hear us?
My phone's there.
Hello?
Letter it, Phil.
Hello?
He can't hear us.
Can you chat? Can you send something to the chat or no?
I have chat disabled.
Perfect.
Mr. Bofia, can you hear us now?
Hello? This thing.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I don't know what was going on yet. Thank you for letting me in. I just wanted to speak briefly on the budget.
Phil, you with us?
I think so. Can you hear me?
Well, yes. We can. Are you ready to start, sir?
I'm going to promote him to a panelist and see if that helps.
Okay.
Can he see us?
Should we write a sign?
Hello?
Hi, Phil.
Where's our video feed? I don't know if you can see us on there, too.
Can anybody?
Oh, now it's muted. We disable chat.
I don't know if I have his phone number.
I have a cell. You want me to text him?
What's that?
You got his number?
I got it, too. Yeah, I can call him.
Can you guys hear me?
We can. Yes, we can.
I'm not sure what's going on. Ah, you hear?
I just said, like, we can hear you. You just can't hear us.
Take me away.
I can't hear anybody inside. I can't hear anybody, but I...
I just texted.
Okay. I'm just going to start speaking. I can't hear anybody speaking to me, so I'm just going to start speaking. Thank you for letting me in. I just wanted to speak a little bit on the budget. Like many of the residents have raised concerns with the budget, I'm also here to speak to the council to hopefully plead that they hold the line. We have seen a significant increase in property taxes that have been a contributing factor to folks not being able to afford to live in the community. We have seen our homeless population increase, and I'm sure the property taxes have something to do with that. Like one of the other members of the community said, we have not really seen the return on investment. All the property taxes that are being raised by this city council, we know that city officials and the school will always come and ask for money. We know how it goes with the school. The school comes and asks for money, and if we say no, they cut people. It ends up in the newspaper. They come back and we give them money, okay? It's been done time and time and time again, and I hope that this year somebody on the council will stand up and actually hold the line for the people in the community. People here are struggling. The wages have not increased to the pace that cost of living has increased or property taxes, and people are really struggling. We know that demands are going to come, and the reason why people elected the folks who are sitting on this council is so that they can represent all of them and not just act as to all the demands that people have in the community. Okay? So once again, I'm hoping that this council will hold the line, and quite frankly, no property taxes should, no increase in taxes should be seen for at least two or three years down the road, because people are really struggling, and they need their city government to make sure that, I know, they don't continue to reach into their pockets. I hope you guys heard me. I'm not sure what's going on with the audio, but that's what I wanted to say. Thank you for letting me hop in and speak today. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else online? Patty?
No other hands raised at the moment.
Okay. With that, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay. And Chad, I'm sorry, I didn't speak with you before. Are we rolling right into the next one of the same thing, or we need a break? You good? Okay. Fantastic. No, we will roll right into... Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online on the city's website. The consent agenda items are routine items, which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda, excuse me, will have an opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda, which is up for three minutes. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Disclosure of conflict of interest. Any councillor have a conflict of interest on any of the votes that they will take tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Finch.
I need to recuse myself from new business item H, as I am on the list.
The list. Fair enough. Noted. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Seen none. All right. So first up, we'll give them a few minutes. I just saw them walk in. So we have a presentation, Central Main Growth Council, by Gabe Gobbin. So we'll give him a few minutes to...
You all get it, Bill?
What's that?
Did you want my work down?
Sure. Yeah, we can certainly do that. And I think, Gobbin, I think I'll have you guys sit at the table. I think that would be easier.
You all ready to go?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you. Kennebec County Budget. At their meeting last week, the Kennebec County Budget Committee did find approximately $600,000 in savings and identified some additional revenues to bring, I think, some minor relief to the county budget, which was forecast to be a 42% increase. That's down to now a 31% increase. So still a very big increase, but at least some savings to help us out, equated to about $116,000 for us. Comprehensive plan. Thank you to all those who participated in our comp plan survey. We received just around 500 responses to our comp plan surveys, so a pretty good response rate. The comp plan commissioner will now compile these results and use it for input and put together a final report and updated comp plan proposal. So thank you, everyone, for participating. That was a great response. CDS spending. We have submitted requests to all three congressional offices for upcoming downtown vision projects, including the Art Walk Silver Street Pedestrian Mall and Spring Street Crosswalk and pedestrian enhancements. We're optimistic about receiving funding for some or all of these projects, and we'll keep you updated as that moves along. My next open office hours session will be May 23, 3 to 5, back at the Waterville Public Library. Of course, are welcome to come and share their thoughts, views, concerns, or complaints or anything else you'd like to tell me. Reminder, I'm always looking for new locations to hold this. I've gotten a few more suggestions and worked those into the calendar. Just a quick update on Castangway Square. You may have noticed some Adirondack chairs appeared there last week. We want to thank Rob Lemire for the donation there of the Adirondack chairs. They will be, if had a few questions, stained or painted in the future, so they won't just be bare wood. Additionally, Waterville creates, and I sat on the selection committee for this, will be installing a large display called Kinetic Flowers in late May or early June, and that will remain up through the season until October. They're sort of tall, large, glass flowers, I think some butterflies, some other interesting things that will really, I think, jazz up the square a little bit this summer. My city manager's Street Tree Task Force recently met. We discussed completing a tree inventory or census to better gauge the current state of our street trees and identify streets, neighborhoods most lacking in tree cover. We also had an extensive discussion on tree species and what may be most appropriate and durable to plant in these locations. So some good work happening there, and we'll be meeting again next month.
I'm sorry. Which committee was that again?
This is the Street Tree Task Force.
Okay. And that inventory, where will that live? The only reason I ask that question is because the city subscribes to a tree database called Arboscope.
Is that through Bartlett?
It was contracted through Bartlett, but the data, we don't have, it's not something we pay for in perpetuity. We pay them to inventory public property and put it in there, but we have that database now, and I'm just wondering whether that would be a correct repository for this.
Yeah, so I think the initial word on that database, it was lacking a lot, and so we were talking about doing something with a lot more specifics to help us actually map out a plan of where to put trees. So we can catch up more on that later, but we did take a look at it, and it was not really deemed totally sufficient for our purposes, if we're talking about the same thing, but we'll...
Yeah, we can tell them.
Good. Appleton Street redesign as part of our downtown vision projects. We are still aiming to get this going this year, which is very exciting. The project calls for streetscape and sidewalk enhancements in addition to the construction of a square and pocket park between the library and the Alphonse Commons Building. It's been advertised. We've recently received construction bids back fairly close to budget, a little bit over, but we're comfortable that we can absorb these costs within the budget and still make this happen this year. So that'll be a really exciting project for 2024. Minmae Chamber Annual Awards. Kim is here. A great event, but just again, a congrats to our city assessor, Paul Castangway, who's had a 30-year career here with the city and was honored as the municipal employee of the year this year. So congrats again to Paul. And lastly, just a quick reminder to please enroll in the city's mass notification system, waterville-me.myfreealerts.com. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Now I will turn it over to Central Main Growth Council, Gabe Gobbin, to give us a presentation on things that are happening over there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My pleasure to just introduce Gabe here momentarily as we queue up the deck, and we'll have some hard copies sending around as well. But with that said, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council Chair, Councillors, Brian, Patty, and team, and members of the public. It's my pleasure to introduce Gabe Gobbin, my colleague in Waterville Economic Development here. Additionally, Waterville creates, and I sat on the selection committee for this, will be installing a large display called Kinetic Flowers in late May or early June, and that will remain up through the season until October. They're sort of tall, large, glass flowers, I think some butterflies, some other interesting things that will really, I think, jazz up the square a little bit this summer. My city manager's Street Tree Task Force recently met, we discussed completing a tree inventory or census to better gauge the current state of our street trees, and identify streets, neighborhoods most lacking in tree cover. We also had an extensive discussion on tree species, and what may be most appropriate and durable to plant in these locations. So some good work happening there, and we'll be meeting again next month.
Which, I'm sorry, which committee was that again?
This is the Street Tree Task Force.
Okay. And that inventory, where will that live? The only reason I ask that question is because the city subscribes to a tree database called Arboscope, that is.
Is that through Bartlett?
It was contracted through Bartlett, but we, the data, we don't have, it's not something we pay for in perpetuity. We pay them to inventory public property and put it in there, but we have that, we have that database now, and I'm just wondering whether that would be a correct repository for this.
Yeah, so I think the initial word on that database, it was lacking a lot, and so we were talking about doing something with a lot more specifics to help us actually map out a plan of where to put trees. So we can catch up more on that later, but we did take a look at it, and it was not really deemed totally sufficient for our purposes, if we're talking about the same thing, but we'll.
Yeah, we can tell them.
Good. Appleton Street redesign, as part of our downtown vision projects, we are still aiming to get this going this year, which is very exciting. The project calls for streetscape and sidewalk enhancements, in addition to the construction of a square and pocket park between the library and the Alphonse Commons Building. It's been advertised, we've recently received, construction bids back fairly close to budget, a little bit over, but we're comfortable that we can absorb these costs within the budget and still make this happen this year. So that'll be a really exciting project for 2024. Mid-May Chamber Annual Awards, Kim is here, a great event, but just again, a congrats to our city assessor, Paul Castangway, who's had a 30-year career here with the city, and was honored as the municipal employee of the year this year, so congrats again to Paul. And lastly, just a quick reminder to please enroll in the city's mass notification system, waterville-me.myfreealerts.com, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Brian. Okay, now I will turn it over to Central Main Growth Council, Gabe Govan, to give us a presentation on things that are happening over there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure to just introduce Gabe here momentarily, as we queue up the deck, and we'll have some hard copies sending around as well. But with that said, good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council chair, councillors, Brian, Patty, and team, and members of the public. It's my pleasure to introduce Gabe Govan, my colleague in Waterville Economic Development here this evening. We're truly fortunate to have you, Gabe. Also here tonight is Kimberly Lindloff, the Executive Director of the Central Main Growth Council, as well as President and CEO of the Mid-May Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, of course, who are extraordinarily fortunate to partner with, to support businesses in the community. Being mindful of time, I'll leave Gabe to the fun items this evening, but I want to again thank the council for the opportunity to be here tonight, to work together, and for the city's forward-thinking, business-friendly approach, and supporting business and economic development within our municipality. A little over two years ago, the city approached the Central Main Growth Council for expanded economic development services. To this day, we continue to hold our projects, teams, and community to the highest standards, which has resulted in CMGC continually being nationally recognized, as well as statewide, for our leadership and impactful and thoughtful sustainable economic development. This evening, you'll hear a thumbnail sketch and an overview mirroring what you have heard from when talking to businesses in Waterville, from the business community in downtown to Trafton Road. We have continued to cultivate a business-friendly environment, a trusted and confidential outlet for entrepreneurs and businesses in our community. We're often the first folks called and the last ones in the evening, working with that entrepreneur, or Mr. or Mrs. CEO, and often when projects aren't going well, as likely as when they are going well. Similarly, when you've talked to the business community, I'm sure you've heard of the impact of some of the deployment of our grants alone within, under the last 12 months, and what that's meant for the families in Waterville, for the employees, and the ability for us to expand, retain, and recruit businesses in our growing community. To that end, we pride ourselves in delivering direct and impactful economic services that far exceed the contracted value in our scope of work with our grants alone, which I would note that the grants that we've been deploying to the business community have not directly impacted, nor are they funded by Waterville taxpayers. Similarly, that contract being, of course, less than half of just 1% of the municipality side of the annual contract. So with that said, it looks like we got the presentation nicely queued up, so I just want to say additionally to the business community here tonight and listening at home, thank you for your hard work every day, and your resilient and thoughtful investments, and the hiring within the growth of our city. We got more work to do, and we look forward to partnering with you. You will always have a partner in the Growth Council, and a wonderful home for your business in the city of Waterville. Thank you, Gabe.
Yeah, thank you, Garvin, everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you for that intro, thank you, council, for the opportunity to share what we've been working on with you all. Again, I'm Gabe Govan, I'm the Assistant Director of Economic Development and Strategic Projects at the Central Main Growth Council. I'm also the point of contact for the business community, as well as the, any municipal economic development needs for the city of Waterville. A little bit about my background, I've been in the region, working on economic development, planning, and environmental items, as well as municipal, excuse me, some municipal consulting for approximately six years now, the last two of which have been with the Growth Council in this role. Central Main Growth Council, as Garvin mentioned nicely, is a 501(c)(6) Economic Development Public Private Partnership. What that means is, we can work just as closely with the municipality as we can with private businesses, which is a really unique differentiator that we have, to embrace that kind of confidentiality, and really be the in-house advisors for both types of entities. It's a tool that we've been able to leverage for the city, and to be able to attract some businesses to this area, and help those, some of our more heritage businesses be retained and grow in the area. Our economic development strategy, it's really difficult to put into a few bullet points or a pyramid, but as you can see, we've tried. The core of what we do is supported through a foundation of partnership and collaboration. We're extremely lucky here in Waterville to have great institutional partners, community organization partners, and great businesses that are willing to really join in and be an advocate for their community. Working with those people allows us to enact the goals that we have, enact the priorities of the city, and really achieve these goals, and get some of these national recognitions that Garvin's mentioned. We use that foundation to then, you know, create an ecosystem where entrepreneurship is identified as an actual career path in the community. The Growth Council, you know, recognizes our success based on growing businesses, growing jobs, and growing GDP, and the best way for us to farm those things is to embrace our own entrepreneurial spirit, and support those in our community that are passionate about starting their own business, and creating those jobs here in the community, and keeping them here. So using those partnerships and that foundation of collaboration, we can have that ecosystem that embraces entrepreneurship, providing the resources they need to be successful. We then can work with our existing businesses, retain them by providing the services they need, meet them where they are, if they need to expand, if they have any medium or longer-term goals, layer in services to help retain them. And then, we're in a position where we can identify what gaps we have, and then leverage, you know, strategic funding, programs, federal programs to fill those gaps that we have, whether it's a resource gap, a technology gap, or a jobs gap. And we identify job creation, housing creation, tech and innovation economy, all as strategies to achieve these priorities of the city. I want to hit on a handful of programs and projects that we work on. This is in no way a complete list, but are some high-level overviews of what we work on at the Growth Council. Hitting on the top here, some of the more compelling figures, looking at the dollars direct to businesses. Our facade and building improvement program is administered by the Growth Council, is a privatized facade program, very similar to what you may see funded through the, through community development block grant programs. However, with a little bit more flexibility, to focus not just on signage, or a facade, or, you know, newer entryways, but also on deferred maintenance, so keeping some of the buildings in our downtown district, you know, looking nice and in good repair. I don't want to get too deep into facade, because we will talk about that in another slide, but one of the, you know, hallmark programs that we have at the Growth Council, and as you can see, is able, you know, for a smaller program, financially, is able to really leverage and punch above its weight, and the kind of funding that it can leverage and change that it can bring. Additionally, the ERH program is one that, is a regional program that the Growth Council administers. However, because of that robust ecosystem we have here in Waterville, we've been able to really channelize a large amount of funding directly to the businesses here. Because of those relationships we have with the entrepreneurs and existing businesses in Waterville, we were able to flow approximately $185,000 in non-dilutive grants directly to these businesses. This was a COVID recovery program, so there was some eligibility tied up, and who was able to apply for these funds. However, we were able to layer it in pretty strategically with businesses that were, you know, looking, had been looking to start up before the pandemic, but were stymied because of its impacts, as well as businesses that had started just before, had a revenue loss, and weren't sure if they were going to be able to continue. And so we're pretty proud of the kind of funding we've been able to provide to these businesses, and how we've been able to use it strategically to help nest some in the downtown and in Waterville. Other items I want to make sure I hit on, which we will talk about more in a little bit, is the Brownfields Assessment Program. One of those great kind of economic infrastructure programs that we can utilize to reduce barriers to development in the community, as well as our, I want to touch on our typical cadence of site planning and proposals. This is one of the kind of day-to-day activities that we complete, a business is in need of a location in the area. As Garvin mentioned, we're usually the first one that receives that call, or one of the first ones. We then are able to meet with folks, identify what their criteria are, develop a site planning package for them, identify what sites are eligible, go with them on some site visits. It's very often an iterative process, and is not, almost never is the first site that we look at, is the one that they end up in, but we, you know, we enjoy that kind of, that hunt, that search, to be able to find the right space eventually, and get people in there, and then it's always a nice celebration at the ribbon cuttings held by the chamber. Moving, keeping moving here, do you want to jump back to the facade program a bit? Waterville's facade program, as I mentioned, is privatized and operated through the Growth Council. This is funded through a combination of institutional and philanthropic dollars, and is annually capped at about $60,000, so a maximum of up to 10K one-to-one matching grants, which, so only a handful per year, with a goal that, you know, every business on Main Street eventually is going to be able to get one. We want to make sure that this funding is sprinkled around, so that we can, you know, keep all the facades in good repair in our downtown area, and attractive one, especially with the historic federal investment we've seen go into it in the last few years. We do have a fairly tight performance geography for this program, that is, you know, intentionally, so that we can keep some of the demand and the energy around the program up, so that people are applying in, and we're not spreading the program too thin, but also so that we can see the impact of this program that has pretty limited funding, and annually have a nice kind of portfolio of projects. You may recognize a few of the facades, additional ones that aren't on here in the last year include the Lion's Den, as well as the Smoke Shop, and the Oasis Barber Shop, all have received these facade grants. This is available to both tenants, so it can be a business who's leasing the property, or the building owner. And so there is, you know, opportunity there for collaboration between tenant and owner, to, you know, really leverage the maximum out of this program. As was on that cover page there, you know, oh, approximately $2.25 million in all leveraged out of this program over the, you know, three or four years of it in operation. That's a pretty significant investment into the community from a pretty, you know, middle-of-the-road, funding-wise facade program, in large part because of the relationships we've had, we've been able to develop with businesses, and go in and help them work through these applications. The Brownfields program is specific to Waterville, it's a federal EPA program coming out of the Superfund Act. It is funding to assess any perceived or real environmental issues on a site, intended for sites that are, you know, underused, or not developed to their fullest, or used to their fullest potential, or being overlooked due to the concerns of maybe some impacted soils, or a building that contains lead paint and asbestos. Some of the, not specific to Waterville's program, but some of the sites in the region that receive this funding include Wyon Mill, as well as Head of Falls, the Head of Falls site for the Riverwalk. Since the city started this program about a year ago, we've assessed three sites, a parcel on Trafton Road in the city's designated growth area, the Grandin's Cleaner Site on Main Street, as well as, most recently, 52 King Street, and the associated parcels with that KV cap project in the South End. This funding not only clear, assesses and provides information on whether or not a site is impacted, but can also provide fund, or provide eligibility, so that the people who are doing these projects can go after larger amounts of funding. The typical assessment is anywhere from, you know, $20,000 to $50,000. However, the actual cost to abate these sites, it can be in the millions, and by utilizing the assessment funding that the city of Waterville has, these developers are then eligible to go after million- and multimillion-dollar grants and loans from other organizations, both regionally, state, and federally, to develop these projects. So, you know, site prep, environmental remediation can be a huge gap, can create a huge gap in a capital stack when a developer is looking to, you know, create housing, or a new commercial project, and this is one of those, you know, strategies that we now have in our toolbox to reduce those barriers and ameliorate those issues. The other, another benefit it has is, if there is a site that is up for sale, or an investor is looking to purchase a site in Waterville, to either purchase a business, purchase a building to revitalize it, the Brownfields Assessment can act as a kind of a draw a line in the sand, and inoculate a new owner for being liable for any previous environmental issues. There's some, you know, flaming hoops to jump through there, and there's some detail, but essentially, it can ensure that there's no transfer of liability for environmental harm. Jumping into some of our more traditional cadence of services at the Growth Council, when I'm meeting with a business, it can take a lot of different cadences, and there's, there is a, we have a fairly standardized methodology for how we, how we interact, how we provide resources, and how we measure and keep in contact with our, the businesses, or, you know, whatever organization type it is going forward, so that we can provide that continuum. We have some great record-keeping and standardized methodologies. However, what isn't standardized is the type of resources, when we're deploying them, and the way that we work with people. We work with businesses one-on-one, we meet with them, to, the first thing we do is understand, you know, what's their background, what's their passion, what is their business, if they have an existing one, or what are they trying to build, and what is their, what are their current concerns? You know, we can, we always tell people, use us as a clearinghouse for any questions or concerns you have. And if we don't have the answer directly in-house, or we don't have the ability to help you in-house, we'll connect you with somebody who can. We never turn anybody away, and we, you know, pride ourselves on being able to work with people from, you know, ideation through acquisition. Typically, a typical cadence for any business could be, you know, an initial intake meeting, a scoping call, identifying what their businesses, what their needs are. That could be as early as needing to, we walk through a business plan, we will provide that resource for them, help them complete their business plan, identify, you know, maybe there's a pivot they can make, or a challenge they hadn't foreseen, and we can provide them with resources to abate those issues. Or maybe they're a little further along, and they're needing some, to make some huge purchases, hire people, get some equipment, or find a new site to operate in. We can provide a site planning package, and access to capital stack, which identifies a number of different resources and funding programs that can layer in to fill those gaps. And then, if they're, once we've identified a site, or identified what their needs are, we fill those gaps using incentives, or, you know, partnerships that we have. We have partnerships with national and regional organizations to provide services, both through the Growth Council and our entrepreneurship arm, Dergo Labs, and we can leverage those resources to fill their gaps at no cost. Or we identify grants, or flexible term loan options, or if it's appropriate, philanthropic resources, and then we work with them through accessing those funds, and help them secure them. Also on this page is a few more specialized projects and programs that don't necessarily go for every business that we work with, however, when they are utilized, they can make a huge difference, and can make a good project great. The Pine Tree Development Zone, for those of you who may or may not be aware, is kind of the premier incentive program for the state of Maine, operated through Maine DECD, is an umbrella program with layering of incentives and. is an umbrella program with layering of incentives and tax abatements for businesses, including the ETIF, Income Tax Credit and Sales Tax Exemption listed here, as well as a few of the other programs in the box below. And then what you're likely familiar with, council, is tax increment financing. The Growth Council works with, you know, any, any business or developer or individual that is looking to complete a TIF deal with the city. We work to, work with them to educate them on what the law is, what the requirements of the law are, and so that they have a consistent and cohesive plan so that when they come to the city, when they come to the council, there's, it's a smoother process. They have something that is in line with the priorities and the needs of the community and the city and it is going to benefit, you know, all parties. The Growth Council works to bring people together. We don't get into negotiations on the TIF. That's for the city to complete, but we do try to educate and provide resources so that the projects can be good projects and move smoothly. Other programs I'll call out, SBIR and STTR is a research and development program, a federal program that works to channelize large amounts of federal investment into rural areas for research and development. So, again, we utilize this program through partnership with our Dirgo Labs accelerator, working with Waterville-based businesses to apply for research and development so we can keep those tech and innovation companies here and provide them the resources to evolve here in Waterville. I do want to spotlight a fantastic case model of utilizing these resources that we worked with. Hopefully all of you are familiar with, Main Street provisions opened on Main Street in fall of 2023. We worked with the entrepreneur, a great entrepreneur, from the business planning stage and site planning phase, helped to identify, you know, flexible capital that could fill gaps as well as identify the licensing pathway that was going to be required to open a business like this. And then when they were approaching open, we helped them with their marketing and PR campaign. This business did apply for and competitively was awarded a $30,000 grant from our ERIH Fund, which allowed them to purchase some equipment and alleviate some of those upfront costs. And as a result, was able to, you know, be a great business on Main Street, create eight new jobs and get some, some nice earned media, bringing attention to the city of Waterville. Some key metrics to highlight here, and I do want to call out, right out of the gate, there's a conflated figure there, 42 site planning packages deployed. That figure is specific to the ERIH program, which has only been operating about 10 months. So that's Waterville businesses in, through the ERIH program. The actual figure for all Waterville businesses in that listed period is more likely in the hundreds for site planning packages that we've deployed. In this time, we've performed about, you know, 117 intakes, stimulated almost 30 new jobs and had, you know, approximately $250,000 in combined non-dilutive grant funding to Waterville-based businesses and entrepreneurs. So that's all stages, that's both early-stage new businesses and entrepreneurs, as well as those more, well, tenured and well-heeled businesses in our community, as well as bringing, you know, seven new downtown businesses to Waterville. New businesses and new jobs is really what we focus on. Like I said at the outset, you know, new businesses, new jobs, grow GDP. That's how we measure our success of the Growth Council over time. And so these are the areas that we focus on.
These numbers are for the date range there at the top of that slide?
Yes, yep. The funding deployed, new jobs, the intakes and the new businesses is in that, is in that, you know, Q2 to Q2, approximately two years, except for that 42 figure, that one is low. Is roughly the period of time since I joined the team at the Growth Council. Some of the more municipally focused and community-focused items as far as grant and technical assistance that we've worked on, the listing out here of a handful of grants, including the Brownfields Program and some others, including an upcoming submit that we're hopeful in the next couple of months to be submitting into the EDA for some, some significant infrastructure funding for the city. These projects I work closely with the city manager and city staff on. We, we help, we prioritize these initiatives at our, I think, are they biweekly, biweekly or at least monthly, development team meetings with city manager, assistant city manager and all, you know, all development staff at the city. We prioritize these and also identify any sort of overlays of our, what we're all working Additionally, direct TA to businesses and nonprofit organizations. So this is not related to, you know, new business recruitment, but from existing businesses and organizations, organizations reaching out to the Growth Council for assistance on a grant that they've identified that they want to go forward with. When they reach out to us for assistance and we work with them, it's roughly 12 entities as, over this, this time period with some significant awards being drawn down and secured. We also fund and manage the free downtown Wi-Fi in Waterville, which is intended to, you know, as you may imagine, get people to be working in and around the downtown, projecting that to be more and more impactful as we have more public and community spaces in our downtown. Some of the other items, working on some of the committees and working groups for the city, both as needed and on a staffed basis. The most significant, I think, amount of time for me since I've been here was the Land Bank Working Group, chairing that, that working group and helping to develop the ordinance and kind of governance strategy for that program. Do you want to highlight a development project that I believe everybody is likely aware of, but one that we've been working with closely? I've actually been working with since before I came to the Growth Council. I know is a project that's been, you know, in different planning phases for a while. You know, the Head of Falls Village, looking to really reshape the way that the downtown interacts with itself and with the riverfront, really creating a new neighborhood, kind of a downtown within a downtown. This, you know, thoughtfully designed development is really, you know, a testament to the quality and caliber of developers that the city is now able to attract with the kind of successes that we've achieved. This, this project is, you know, very much a housing project. We do believe the Growth Council, if we can win the housing race, we're going to win as a city and be able to attract new, more new businesses. 63 units, combined workforce and market rate housing, as well as commercial space, classic mixed-use development strategy. That, that 17,000 square feet of commercial space is, may not sound like a lot, but one of the largest challenges we face at the Growth Council in site planning is the lack of clear span, commercial space, especially in that mid-square footage range, a few to maybe under 10,000 square feet. It's really, really not a lot here in the community, so we're having to use more and more of those kind of complex development strategies and funding sources to make that kind of development possible. So, having new commercial square footage available in the downtown by doing this infill development strategy in a low-density part of the city is, or of the downtown, is fantastic. Additionally, you know, most, just about every housing project that the city sees, we will have worked with or continue to work with a developer in some fashion, whether that's on helping them to fill gaps in their capital stack, look at approaching the city for a TIF, working with main housing or using the Brownfields Program to clear the site before they take ownership of it. We work with, with developers at all stages. And a little metric there, calling out roughly, conservatively, 250 to 300 units of new housing over the next few years, not including ADs. So, full new development, new construction units. These next couple of slides are just highlighting the media strategy that the Growth Council employs. Every business that we work with, every entrepreneur, whether it's, you know, entering into the area, expanding, hiring new people, or if they've achieved funding, we, we work with them on a press strategy, whether that's a press release, social media marketing. We make sure that they get their earned media recognition and that it is always citing back to Waterville and the resources and the collaboration at play here. In this, you'll see new downtown businesses, some tech and innovation businesses, the facade program. Do you want to call out GTCA, Genotyping Center of America, which is quietly, you know, one of the most aggressively evolving and growing biotech startups in the state and at the Hathaway Creative Center in downtown Waterville. And then my just kind of final call to any sort, anybody in the business community in Waterville, if anything on this list is something that you have need for or question on or is a challenge for you, contact me, contact the Growth Council. I would love to work with you, I want to work with you, we have resources and we can help you. So please, please reach out. And if there was anything that folks on the council want to dive into a little more, I know you guys have got a pretty full agenda today, but happy to meet with you for a coffee or have you at our coworking space in the Hathaway Creative Center and chat any of the strategies you'd like to learn more about. Or if there's any business that you're, you have knowledge of that you'd like us to work with, please send them our way.
Thank you. Any questions off the top from the council at this point? Mark, Gabe's here.
I have it.
Councilor?
It's the, I assume like what we're going through an annual budget, like the Growth Council has a budget. Is that a public document?
Yeah, thank you for the question. The Growth Council is structured as a 501(c)(6) organization, so it is technically a private budget per being a semi-private organization. With that said, we treat the majority of our data and documents as a public good, so we're happy to share that with you. I'd also just note, not to speak for Gabe, but to really to speak for the whole Growth Council team, we report to a board of directors and an executive board of directors every other month. Gabe does at least-
That's okay, you go more detail. I just was wondering if I could get a copy of-
I guess the, to underscore the point, happy to share a budget with you.
Thank you.
We're in budget season as well and our fine city manager sits on our board as well as a-
Thank you.
-share and oversight. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Gabe, Garvin, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to council comments and/or committee reports. Any counselors have any comments or committee reports this evening?
I do, I guess-
Counsel French?
Well, wait, hold on. What was your question?
The question anywhere, council comments?
Yes, I have a council comment. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, you didn't just say committee, committee reports. No, so council comment. Before I joined the council, probably about, oh, actually 10 years ago, I became involved with Friends of Green Street Park. I am now one of the co-chairs of Friends of Green Street Park. We have been working tirelessly to renovate said named Green Street Park. And I just want to announce that the final set of our fundraiser exercise equipment went in this past week, which completes our renovation of the park. And so, you know, this has been a very long process. We genuinely could not have done it without Matt Scan and all of his help and hand-holding and guidance and patience with us as we fundraise, working with us, you know, advocating for us with the city. And it's just, I guess, kind of, kind of the close of an era that we finally finished this project and you guys should go to the park and check out the new equipment. And we promise we're painting the stage whenever it stops raining when we go to paint it. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I can attest to his equipment. We couldn't play with it, it had caution signs all over it. They hadn't put any gravel or anything down yet, but there's four, four new pieces of equipment down there too.
Yeah, it stands out when I was down there for the bike swap this weekend, I was like, what's that? And then, yeah, so it's good, it looks good. So, good, thank you for the work. Yes, sir, continue.
I want to commend Paula Raymond and Anna Holdner for two weekends of community service. Paula worked tirelessly over the last six months or more. We, two weeks ago, had South End Neighborhood Cleanup. We took out better than three 30-yard dump bodies of trash out of the city's common areas in the South End. Would like to thank everybody that showed up for that. We had a couple of commercial groups that came in, we had Rotary come in, the police were down there helping a little bit, the mayor was there for a time. The following weekend, we had our annual bike swap. We handed out better than 40 bikes last weekend. So, and I just checked on a couple of little girls that were some of the first, they were, you better get some more money, they're going to tear up their tires. Them little girls are, they're all over the place. And this year with the funding that they had, we were able not just hand out recycled bikes, we handed a whole lot of new bikes out. So, I'm looking forward to the next one. And I want to thank both these ladies for the work they do for our community. And mind you, when you're driving down Silver Street this summer and you're admiring the flags, that's not the city, that's Paula. When you drive past KMD to Carter Memorial Bridge Drive, whatever it's called, the islands there with the flowers, that's Paula. That's the work of community. And I want to commend them for their work.
Thank you. Public comment. Again, this is a time where citizens who wish to speak on a topic does not appear on tonight's agenda, will have the opportunity to do so now and then can speak up to, for three minutes. Do we have anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment? Patty, anybody online this evening?
No hands raised.
Yes, ma'am?
Since my name's being mentioned.
Yeah.
Usually I like Anna to come up and do that because she's the chair, but at any rate, on May 25th, we're having our very first annual yard sale. And it is on the holiday weekend, it's a Saturday. We're also having the AYCC come in and offer a service for the summer, so that is still in the works and we're working with Matt Scan to make sure we can have the park for the eight weeks that we're looking at to work with youngsters during the summer. So, the yard sale is a donated item. If you have anything that you don't want anymore that's usable still, you can give me a call or email me and I will come pick it up. And we're also renting out tables at $20 if you want to rent one and $10 if you bring your own. And again, Mr. Scan is going to offer the tables and he's going to bring the tent, which is a tremendous asset for us to have. I don't know what we're going to do when he goes because he really does work well with us. So, at any rate, that's what we're going to do from, I think, 10 to, or 9 to 2 in the afternoon on Saturday, rain or shine, because we'll have the tent to cover us if it's not good weather. So, and we're even having hot dogs.
Sweet.
Yeah.
But on the heels of the South End's cleanup, I've been talking with a lot of folks who are, were wanting to schedule some other cleanups around town. And one of the areas that came up was the encampment area down by the Head of Falls. So, I actually, I ended up walking it this weekend, sorry, Mike. Mike was going to join me for a walk, but we, the weather's been kind of weird on the days that we were wanting to. So, I walked it and I just want to bring to, you know, I don't know if anyone has mentioned that trail at any of the meetings, but that trail's a mess. There's a lot of trash, and not just trash, encampments were just left abandoned, and there's needles everywhere. It's really, it's a concern. And as someone who has done cleanups, I wasn't sure if the city had any plans to address that. Or if I should encourage community members to, yes, go ahead, down there and pick up what you can.
So, I just, we're absolutely aware of this problem and we have been talking about doing cleanup this spring. It's, as you just stated, it's a health hazard in many ways, the number of needles, et cetera. So, Matt and I are aware of this problem, we've talked about this, and the city's going to be doing some cleanup, but maybe perhaps we could organize, help organize a volunteer effort also. I think all the help we can get is appreciated.
Okay, yeah, because based on the number of needles, you're definitely going to want somebody there who knows and is comfortable handling it, and I can help connect that.
Yeah, I think that would be one of the things that I would, you know, maybe discourage a community cleanup just on the off chance, you know, just, again, having not seen it, we'll get down there, you know, this week or something, but, you know, that would be the last thing that I would want to have happen. So, you know, somebody's trying to do something good and something bad happens, the unintended consequence, but yeah, awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Patty, anyone online for public comments this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak tonight? Okay. Fantastic. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion for passage of tonight's case consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, no? Show of hands. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to old business ordinance 85-2024.
I will move to read by title only.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor. Wonderful.
Ordinance 85-2024, adopt a historic preservation ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. I will open this up for discussion amongst the council. Anyone, this is the second reading, Counsel Finch?
So, last, last meeting, I had talked about my concerns with Section 11b2 and restricting property owners. And so, I already sent the council the amendment, but I am going to propose changing the original text of every reasonable effort shall be made to use a property for its originally intended purpose or provide compatible use for a property that requires minimal alteration to the character-defining features of the structure or site and its environment. And I am proposing to amend that section to read, "The use of the property shall be of compatible use that requires minimal alteration to the character-defining features of the structure or site and its environment, with strong preference for original intended purpose." And I worked with Michael Hall on this as well.
Second.
Yeah, that was a motion, yes.
Okay, all right, second on the table. All right, discussion with regard to the amendment? Does anyone have any concern with-
Mr. Bear.
Yes?
Yeah, just real quick, I just did want to say Counsel Finch did talk to Michael Hall and myself on this, and city staff is in support of this amendment. Just wanted to add that.
Okay. Anyone, discussion, questions? Can I, all those in favor?
I think this one online. Is it Claude?
Claude raised his hand, very top of the screen.
Do you want to continue with the vote, or do you want to?
I think we need to hear what Claude had to say.
Yeah, we could, I mean, I guess. Bring him in.
Can they hear us?
Claude's muted again.
Claude, there we go. Can you hear us? Can you hear us, Claude?
Good evening. I have no comment.
Muted again.
There we go. Am I unmuted now?
You are, you're good.
Can you hear us, Claude? I can hear you fine. Good evening. I have no comment. There we go. Okay, okay, unmuted now. You are, you're good. Can you hear us, Claude? I can hear you fine. Everything is, everything is in instant replay. So, I'm just going to talk. The reason that I want to zoom in is to, is to recognize the members of the community, of the committee. That's Marilyn Cannavan, Pam Merrill, Julie Miller-Soris, Ron Merrill, Cassie Julia, Josh Bevel, and Larry Dodge. And there may be some people that I missed because it's been going for, the committee's been meeting for two and a half years. I'd also like to thank Ann Beveridge, the planning director, who was invaluable in getting this, keeping the ball rolling on this committee. And finally, special thanks to Michael Hall who came in and helped us get to the finish line. Thank you, Counsel Le, for considering for this ordinance at the finish line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Le.
Okay. So, I believe we were at the point where we were going to take a vote on this amendment. Show of hands, all in favor? Thank you. Okay. Any, can we get a motion to move as amended?
So moved.
Move a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on the remainder of the ordinance? Any comments? Okay, seeing none. Patty, can I get a vote?
Yeah, we need to roll call this because it's an ordinance. Counsel Gilli?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, wonderful. All right, moving on to new business resolution 92-2024.
Authorize the issuance of a victual's license to Benjamin Nichols doing business as Aprilis.
Okay.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you very much. Benjamin? Wonderful. You want to come up and give us a little plug as to what you're doing?
So, we just recently took over the Engine 5 Bakehouse on Western Ave.
Okay.
And they kind of dropped off business last year and shut down, and we're looking to take over that space and just kind of, you know, keep putting into the community like everybody in Waterville has been lately. I just recently bought a residential unit here in Waterville, so I know a little bit about the city, but I'm new to living in the area, so looking forward to it. I enjoy it here quite a bit and hopefully we'll be seeing you guys, you know, on a regular basis. But we're going to be offering a more wider variety of goods than the Curtain Bakery was, so hopefully, you know, you guys have a large appetite and you're looking forward to having something new on the menu.
So, to be clear, you're opening up, this is a bakery?
It's a, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a bakery and there'll be items to take home as well. There'll be lots of different types of confections there on a rotating basis, so it'll always, you know, offer new items for everybody. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, healthy take-home items for everybody, not just sweets, so it'll be a wide variety for everybody in town.
Excellent. All right, wonderful. Well, great, well, thank you. Thank you very much for bringing your business to Waterville, I appreciate it. All right. And with this, can I get a show of hands? All those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Best of luck to you. All right, moving on to resolution 93-2024.
Authorize the issuance of an outdoor dining permit to Sotirius Greedus doing business as OPA Incorporated.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is anyone from OPA here?
No.
No? Okay, well, I will just inform the council then that the structure that they are looking for us to do tonight has already been built and is up, and they had, they were seating when I walked over here for council, they had already seated outdoor dining, which is not, they don't have permission to do it. And I don't feel comfortable giving them permission tonight, considering that they just went ahead and did it anyway. I have concerns with their structure that they already put up, and I understand they don't need to provide us a map, but the way that the structure is set up, it goes exactly to the street, so any curbside parking, if you are on the passenger side, you will not be able to open your door and get out of your car. That's all.
Okay. And this was, this was a change this year because of the ADA requirements, so it's a little bit shorter or-
Changed it to the clearance with the pathway.
Correct, yeah. So, you're saying this goes from door to curb?
No, not door. So, last year, it went from their door and then extended across the flat section of the sidewalk, which was not ADA compliant because people had to walk around the curved bricks, and this one moves it back from the door and puts it on kind of that sloped path and then part of the flat sidewalk. There's four feet of clearance between their door and the start of the structure.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion, comments?
I did, I did spoke, I spoke with the owner of OPA and he did mention that he got all the code, like, the code enforcement involved and everything was approved, that's so. Just letting you know, I just think there might, there could have been, I'm assuming there could have been a misunderstanding, but I'm just throwing it out there that-
So, Dan probably went, spoke to them, said, hey, this looks good, not knowing the process that this needs to come-
The four feet for ADA compliance is what's required and codes has been informing everyone of that and will be checking those clearances. As far as the corridor issue, I'm not sure that was one of the criteria that code looked at. You know, I'd have to follow up with them, but probably not. So, we can't ask about that, but if they're meeting the four feet clearance on the other side, that's what was required.
Can code check up with them about having outdoor dining without a permit tonight?
What means we haven't voted yet? Right. So, could you remind me why there's no diagram required for the, for this year?
The ordinance doesn't require it for regular outdoor dining, it does require it for extended outdoor dining.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, what I'm hearing is that it does meet the requirements of code and, and the ordinance, they may have, obviously, they jumped the gun a little bit on, on opening without having a council vote. Has that ever happened before? Are we aware?
I think it possibly could have happened before, but I can't guarantee that.
Right. It's not a great practice, but-
The license isn't generally issued, the permit, until we get approval from code and fire.
Right. And do you, and did you get those?
I don't believe we have yet.
Okay, so I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing it was approved.
Well, they may have approved it to the owner.
Right.
Code may have spoke with the owner, saying that that structure was acceptable, but we haven't received the formal, at least I'm not aware if we have.
Another example of easier to get forgiveness than to get permission.
Well, I think we'll-
All right, we just add at this point, it does appear, as of right now, they have met the requirements of code. We don't have code sitting here. As Patty said, we don't have maybe the final, but apparently they have met with code, the four feet seems to be in place. If they are operating today already outdoor dining, that would be, you know, a problem, and we'll have code follow up on that. But otherwise, it appears that they have met the requirements.
So, you know, I think this is, it is concerning to me. I also noticed that, that they were, you know, they had dining out today. I don't, I'm not ready to deny the permit, but perhaps a penalty is appropriate in this case. We do want people to follow the rules.
What is the penalty for having an outdoor-
Do we have a penalty in the-
There's a general code violation penalty. I believe it's $100 per day, and that's administered through the code office.
We have a hand online, Patty. That's fine. No, not yet. You know, I think, I think in this, I think in this case, I mean, you guys can vote on however you want, I think that, as I hear this and I peel back kind of this onion, I don't know that maybe the practices that we have in the audience, and I think we can really take a quick look at this and maybe adjust this ordinance a little bit to, you know, I think of it, you know, kind of as a checklist, you know, like the planning board, they go through, and when it comes to us, it's met all of this criteria, you know, ahead of time, I think that we can, I think seeing a diagram, especially for some of these folks that, you know, do pretty elaborate things, I mean, we're not talking about Sealea Tea where they're just throwing some tables out up against the building. These are pretty, pretty nice-looking structures, you know, so I think a diagram, you know, in the definition of extended, I think anything that extends outside of your four walls is, would be considered extended and, because it's not the norm. So, I think we could take this ordinance back a little bit and tweak it so that way we have things going forward. But I don't, I think there's a lot of, there might have been a lot of confusion, and I don't know if we want to, where that confusion was before we just start issuing the penalties.
Right. So, just to clarify, when this comes before us, the assumption is that all the paperwork is in place to support?
That means that there's been an application and they've paid the fee.
Right.
And the, all of the licenses are contingent upon approval by the departments. So, you approve it, but I wait until I hear from code and fire before I actually issue the license or permit.
Okay. All right.
And then explicitly, they're not allowed to have the outdoor dining until they get the permit from you in hand.
Yeah.
Oh, I would assume that, yes.
So, regardless of what we vote today, they would be unlikely to be able to do it tomorrow unless they were just right on top of it.
Right, then there could be a delay between the approval from the city council and then being able to set up, correct?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's code enforcement that levies any infractions.
It would be a code violation, correct?
Counsel Gagnon?
I'm just, I think we're getting off the subject here, we've had a motion before, so-
We've had a motion before, so. I mean, if we're talking about changing an ordinance or something like that, all we have is just one question in front of us right now.
That's my question. I mean, whatever Counselor Finch has raised, is this a question or are you making a motion to table or what are, what are you suggesting?
I mean, I already said that, you know, based on the fact that they're, they're, they're operating outdoor right now without a permit, and I, I just, my, my thing was just giving information to the council that they are currently, do not have a dining permit. And as far as, you know, you know, I believe Patty said that she does not have anything in hand from code enforcement or fire department right now, saying that they've met the clearance. So.
Counsel Green? I just, I think they're two separate issues. There, whether we're going to approve the dining permit, and then there's a code enforcement issue of whether they're operating legally tonight.
Which is not us.
Which is not us.
Right. So we have what we need. Yeah, we do.
Okay.
There is a hand raised, shall I?
Sure.
Mr. Bofia, can you hear us okay? You're muted, sir.
There is a hand raised, shall I? Hello? I can't hear anybody again, but I don't know what's going on with the audio, but there's things not working. I just wanted to chat in on this particular. Could you guys hear me? I'm assuming you can hear me.
Yes.
I know there's a delay. Okay. It looks like there are two different issues at hand with this particular item. Okay? There might be a violation from the organization, but based on what I've heard during the meeting, it looks like they are meeting all the requirement for them to be able to get the permit. Right? They're meeting all the requirement, and we're saying that in Waterville, we approve business, and we're trying to get the business in, right? A violation is different than trying to deny a permit to a business, because they might have been in violation. It's a beautiful day today, people want to be out, people like to be out. It's understandable, a business will want to seize the day and make sure that, you know, they, they can cater to the clients who are coming and want to be outside on this one day. I don't believe that it would be appropriate to deny them a permit, because one counselor has an objection as them being able, as them violating code, right? That's a problem for the code enforcement to deal with, not with the council. The council should vote to give them the license, and if code needs to do whatever they need to do, they can go ahead and, and do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. In three minutes, you'll get that. Okay. Anyone else, anyone else in the public comment?
No.
Okay. Show of hands. All those in favor?
Okay.
Five, two.
Opposed.
All those opposed. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Resolution 94, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of an outdoor dining permit to Mary Carpenito, Carpenito, doing business as Amici's Cucina.
Move to adopt.
Second. Oh, sorry. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Patty, can I get a vote?
All those in favor?
All right. Moving on to Resolution 95, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of an outdoor dining and extended dining permit to Erica Savage, doing business as the Lion's Den Tavern.
Wonderful.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question, if we know it. So I know that this outdoor is occupying that, that city park, and I assume, I should have asked this two weeks ago, because we charge Silver Street and proper peg for use of the city street, right? So we are also then charging for the use of the city park?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Can I get a show of hands? All those in favor? All right. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 96, 2024.
Approve contractor quotes for projects in the 2022 recreation bond funds.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Matt, now you want to talk about this just on the off chance, you can say, it's up to you, whatever you're gonna do. You have the box, whatever.
Okay. So we're happy with where the numbers came in. They're a little lower than what we expected, and we're especially happy that three of them are local contractors, that we're very comfortable. Can you guys still hear me? Yeah, it sounds like it went up. That we're comfortable with, we know, and we think we're gonna get good projects done. Each of the projects is slated for late summer, early fall. The contingency is also very important, because some of these projects aren't, aren't black and white, there are gonna be some moving parts that we, we may have to make up for. Don't expect to use it, but it'll be nice to, to have just in case.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Gagnon?
Is one of the projects on this, you talked about earlier, the Sterling, is it the Sterling Street Park?
It is, but it's not included in this proposal. Correct.
Anyone else? Okay. Matt, thank you. All right. Can I get a, all those in favor? No opposed? Moving on to Resolution 97, 2024.
Refer to the planning board rezoning a portion of 37 Armory Road.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, please.
Hi, my name is Dan Bickford. I own Eagle Run. We purchased this property and to clean up the neighborhood and clean up the environment. We spent a fair amount of money doing the environmental cleanup. We, we're looking to put an addition onto that building, a very small addition that doesn't require to go to the planning board. It's only sixteen, twenty feet by eighty feet. But we found out afterwards, the building doesn't sit on the lot where it says it sets on the lot. So we, we ran into setback requirements, but we own all the land around it, so we're going to take land out of one of the other lots, deed it to this property. And then we found out that it's a third of an acre, that's the size of this building and the parking lot, there's two zones in it. So to clean that up, we want to have it commercial where all the other land that's adjoining it is commercial. So we need to clean up the zoning and clean up the setbacks. And then we'll go to the, I think, the planning board, that's our process. I usually don't do this. I pay our engineers to do this stuff, so.
Sure. Is, is this the old auto, auto shop? Is that, is that what you guys got?
Yeah.
I see the work that you guys did with that, and it is an absolute game changer for that area.
That cost me fortune to clean it up, so I was listening to the Centurion Grove Council. There might have been some help, but it.
Looks awesome.
We're happy to, we're happy to clean it up. I mean, it's just one of those things. We need extra warehouse space, you know, there's no business gonna go into it. There will be some more people that will work for us.
Are you adding to the, to the old garage? You want to get rid of it? What do you want?
No, we're gonna add to the, just the backside of it. When in time, we, we need extra space to store the summer equipment. I mean, we didn't want to add on to the building we have now. There is plans in the work, we're doing development on where we want to have a new location. We're looking at Waterville, but we're probably build fifty, sixty thousand square feet. And then we're also planning seventeen thousand feet in Bangor this year. So, you know, we average between eight and ten million a year we spend. So I, I grew up in Fairfield, you know, I started the company from the very beginning, and I invest all over the United States, but we decided we're gonna, I can't retire because I, I, I'm not good at golf. So I'm gonna keep right on working and, you know, expand the business. So, so we're planning on doing some, and we're hoping we can build it on that same location, but if we don't, this, we have a ten-acre lot on the Armory Road and a twelve-acre lot on the Armory Road. So we're, we're looking at doing some development here in the, in the city. So, but we'd like to get this done, just to get the mess cleaned up.
Sure, for sure.
So.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what the next process is, so.
Yeah. Now we talked to these folks, and let's see what, how we go. Any councils have a question? Any comments?
I think we need to all give him credit for the cleanup that he did. And if that place was a mess.
I mean, really, if you saw what that looked like a year or two ago, it was, it is a game changer today.
Yeah.
And I can only imagine.
And we'd have, we'd have done more, but we ran up against all these problems and I, it was funny that the people started, we, we can't do any work until we get the zoning issues really straightened out.
Sure.
Because we don't know which, which set of rules to, to use. So code enforcement's been good with us, it's just been, it's a mess.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Can I get a, all those in favor? Thank you. All right. Wonderful. Next stop, planning board. Okay. What do we, are at, Resolution 98, 2024.
Approve the amended capital improvement reserve fund policy.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Brian, you want to kick us off here?
Yeah. So as we, as we talked about, this is updating our capital reserve policies. This was created actually back in 2005. It was funded from three then-existing reserve accounts, which no longer exist. So we are asking that the funding source be changed to interest generated on the city's general fund. This year, it was about $455,000 over what was budget, and that would go into a capital reserve account to be used for capital expenses that the council deems necessary, and with their approval, these funds will be spent out of that account.
Any counselor comment? Counsel Green?
Yeah. So the, so the intent of this fund is to be able to have money in reserve for a capital project that, that is not going to go in the budget, that's too small. Would, are you proposing this to be something, you know, this year, it's part of the budget process? Are you, are you, I'm, I'm just wondering about the amount of money that should accumulate in the fund.
Right. So it will fluctuate. So there are some years where it could be a much smaller amount.
Right. Well, the, the, the policy says a minimum balance of two hundred thousand shall be maintained. I'm just wondering about a cap, you know, on the chance that we get interest and other funds flowing in there, you know, just so that we don't have it piling up there.
We could put a cap on it, sure. But just to give an example of, you know, where this may come into play, so, for example, the library has some HVAC issues that, that came about sort of mid-budget year, $150,000 or so to replace heat pump units, hasn't been budgeted for, library has no other capital reserves.
Right.
Where does that money come from? So it's instances like that that we're looking at, to have this other fund to utilize for capital expenses, and they do pop up, you know, frequently to be able to take care of these issues.
So I don't know what the right number is, but I would, I'd like to move to amend that we cap this fund at, let's say, $500,000.
That sounds good.
I'll second. Second.
So if the fund goes over $500,000, what do we do with that money?
It means that they, it, it goes into the general fund instead of in the capital improvement fund.
But we can move money from that fund to the general fund, correct? For this policy?
The idea being if interest, if we don't run into anything, and over $200,000 turns into $500,000 over time with interest and whatever else, anything over $500,000 goes back to the general fund.
I, I understand that. I'm just wondering, I mean, it's a process that, it seems like it would be too automatic, I guess. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that if that money, currently, if money comes out of the capital project, if we decide to take it out, that's an action that the council has to take, is that correct? So if it goes over that $500,000, then it just goes into the general fund?
Maybe it should have, maybe it should have some language, maybe it should have some language to state that the council gets informed and we determine at that time to move it, not just bang, oops, in the cover of darkness, it moves.
I would just say we can do that.
It keeps, it keeps it transparent.
Well, if you, if you put a cap on it, it's gonna be funded up to $500,000. Over and above that, we go back to the general fund.
But somebody will look at it, there'll be that one person that looks at it and says, something happened under the cover of darkness, and the people don't want to know. And you know full well that there is one person going to do it. There will be that one person. So yes, it would be, to have the cap, but when it comes time to move the money, the council is informed and it's not, it's made transparent.
It could even be part of the, the finance reports that you get from the finance director, you know, if you'd like. I mean, we can talk about those things, those things happening, but the cap is obviously to, to state we're funding it up to this level, above that is just staying in the general.
I understand that, but I, there's gotta be something for transparency, because like I said again, there's that one person that's gonna say we're doing stuff under the cover of darkness.
One second, one second. I wonder if the cap, instead of on the, the amount of the fund itself, because this varies on a yearly basis, that we shouldn't put a cap on the amount that's put in every year? Like, why would we cap it at?
The cap is on, is on the fund, not the amount put in. Correct.
But I'm saying, like, you know, like, if we're at a, but like, if we're saying, okay, we want to fund this at $250,000 a year, we're in this year, it's $450,000, we're gonna put $200,000, and then the other $250,000 goes into, you know, the general fund. This capital fund, if we don't spend any money, if no money comes out of this, we'll just continue to grow in case we need a capital project that exceeds $500,000, like, then we have, you know, it, it, it doesn't matter.
If I may.
Yeah, you may.
To echo what the mayor's saying, and then, you know, the concern that Counselor Green has is that the, the money would continue to accrue without being utilized, but when it's under the purview of a city administration that's paying attention to that fund and drawing the council's attention to it, we would be able to make the decision in any given budget year to draw it down to an appropriate level. Am I, am I not understanding that correctly?
Maybe repeat that.
Sure. If the, the money in this fund go, you know, Counselor Green was concerned that the money, if the money were to continue to accrue, it would just become, you know, sort of unutilized, a large pot of unutilized money. So this is a, a resource that's being a little bit squandered by the city, but I was saying that, you know, competent city administration would safeguard against that by drawing the council's attention to that fund if the fund was growing to a point where it needed to be drawn down to the general fund or for whatever.
And I think with the new format of finance reports you're receiving, I think transparency has, has increased generally, and we, we continue, we're gonna continue that, obviously. And like I said, maybe perhaps the transactions of this capital reserve account are part of the finance director's routine finance report to you guys. So as Counselor McCormick is saying, it is transparent when there's money moving in or out of there. I mean, obviously, you guys are also the agents to expend out of it, so anything going out of it is gonna be approved here with you guys. So I think the $500,000 cap is fine. You know, the real intent with this reserve account is to, as I just said, account for those expenses like the library. They're smaller in nature, they're not part of a five-year capital plan, things that come up, you know, just randomly. That's what we're trying to address here. So I think $500,000 is, is fine. Most of the expenses we're talking about are gonna be far less than that, but we do need some sort of fund to look at when these things do come up, and that's the primary goal here.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have a problem with the, the fund. I don't have a problem with the changes that you made. I don't even really have a problem with the cap. My concern is that surplus. You know, what happens to that surplus? And it seems like with this amendment, it would just dump it into the purview of the, of the bureaucracy to, to cover whatever it is that needs to be covered.
Am I the bureaucracy?
Yes. With capital B.
Career politician, by the way.
Excuse me. So my point is that I think. So my point is that I think, yeah, I just don't think it's a good idea. If, if it was a, if you presented it as like a goal or something, that would be one thing, but I, I really think that any additional monies that come into the city, which could be from this, should be discussed by the council.
So when you say surplus, just what are you getting at there?
Anything over 500,000.
Anything greater than the 500,000.
Anything over the cap.
But that's remaining general fund, anything over 500,000, that's not, I mean, there's, there's no change there.
So if it went to 500,000, it just spilled over into the general fund?
But it's additional income, right? If you, if it goes over 500,000.
Interest income.
Then, alright, so it's additional interest income, so it's a pot of money.
Well, right now, it's just general fund, you know, money, so this, this is just dedicating 500,000.
Well, I know it's general fund's money, but where is it being spent? How do we decide that? I think the council should decide that.
But the council does decide that, I mean, you approve all expenditures, you approve a budget, there's nothing that, you know, the bureaucracy can, can spend without you guys' permission.
Once a budget is set, we don't approve every expenditure that the city makes.
Sure.
So you're talking about adding money to the budget, right? To be used for something that the council's never dealt with.
Can I speak to my amendment, please? All I'm trying to accomplish here is, is just to ensure that we don't have a reserve fund that is just accumulating way more capital than is the intent. It's not going to be spent, it's going to be, it's going to add to the unassigned fund balance, as I understand it, but, so that will always need to council approval, whether it's through the budget process.
Again, I'm talking about the surplus.
What surplus do you mean?
Anything over 5, if you put, if you put a cap on 500,000, right, and we get 510,000, that 10,000 is over the cap, right? So, that we've set, so where does that 10,000 go?
So that's the current arrangement, so there is, it's not in a dedicated fund right now, it's just general fund dollars, so, I mean, so the surplus you're describing, I think is just, you know, what we're doing now, we're just talking about dedicating up to 500,000 to a capital reserve account.
So currently, the administration takes money from that fund and?
The fund doesn't exist right now, yeah, the fund is, it's, it's been defunct, really, for a while.
It, it's not being filled with any, any revenue, and I think, right? The point of this is to use any interest income, put it into this fund first. Right now, it's just going into the unassigned fund balance, correct? So we're taking, my proposal is we take up to 500 and we put it into this fund, and anything else goes to the unassigned fund balance, as it is doing now, and that's why the fund balance is growing.
Councillor Gagnon?
Oh, she said it, that was what I was going to say, yeah.
Councillor Finch?
Yeah, I just think it might be easier to frame this as, right now, we have a, you know, money in the unassigned fund balance, and what we are proposing is taking a maximum of 500,000 from that and dedicating it to capital improvement reserve, and that, that's essentially what this amendment would do. That's, that's just, it's a different way of framing it, but that's what it does. There's no excess money going anywhere else, there's no additional revenue coming in that's spilling anywhere. It's literally just saying, unassigned fund balance, a maximum of 500,000 will be dedicated to capital improvement reserve fund, otherwise, it just stays in the unreserved.
And just to be clear, unassigned fund balance, only the council can approve those expenditures.
And to be clear, we're not pulling money from the fund balance to fund this, we're taking this, which at the end of the year, we're taking the revenue.
Interest income.
Interest that we have to fund this.
Microphone.
And according to the policy, other types of funds, capital, unspent capital improvement projects, sale of city properties, and interest revenue, so that's potentially a lot of revenue going into this fund, that's, that's.
Unless you cap it.
And I would, I would make the point as well, that any purchases that, or expenditures that would come out of this that are in excess of 10K are going to have to be approved by the council anyways, so it's not like anybody is going to be spending a large amount of that money without direct supervision from the council. That's the way it's always worked.
I didn't hear that motion.
Huh?
That's just current, that's current city policy.
That's the way it works.
Anything over 10,000 has to come to the council for approval.
I know, but it might not be that much.
What?
So then?
No, that's true, yes, yeah.
It's 2,000, okay, you got an extra 2,000 or something, now the city manager says, we're going to use it here, a little problem here, is that how it works, or does it come back to the council?
So, yeah, under 10,000, administration has the discretion to, to do that, over 10 is back to you.
I know, but this is new money, right? It wasn't budgeted for, so. I don't understa, I don't understand, I guess. Yeah, I'm not hearing anything about the surplus.
Yeah, so.
I don't know why we're here, pal.
I, I. I think we're probably be.
I understand what you're trying to do, but it can be done anyway.
In two minutes, can we explain the current process? If this didn't exist, right, and there were, you guys needed two new copy machines in City Hall, and it came to 7,000 to replace those copy machines, the process for which would be?
Yeah, so we, we can do that, you know, in-house, in administration, under 10,000 dollars, obviously, over 10,000 has to come back to council for approval.
Correct, okay.
This comes back to the budget process, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I mean, this comes back to the budget process. If you needed two copiers, why weren't they in the budget?
Because they broke.
If they break mid-year.
I understand that, so that's what the capital reserve is for, the whole amount, but now we're talking about a, a, a sum of money that is going to be in surplus of that, so.
So we're just talking about this year, you know, things have gone very well, Christina's done a good job, we've generated more interest income than we have in, in previous years. So it is a, a constant issue that for capital expenses mid-year that weren't planned for, that weren't budgeted for, the library's the best example I can pull out right now, 150,000.
Can I just interrupt, you're talking about using, you know, that below 10,000 for that, you're not talking about using the surplus? See, nobody talked to me about the surplus.
So you're talking about over, when you say surplus, over 500,000?
Yes, right.
Right, so that's just going to be general fund money, as it is now, unassigned fund balance, you guys are agents to expend there, any, any surplus. Under 500,000, same deal, if it's, if it's 10,000 or more, you guys are the agents to expend, you have to prove it has to be here.
Yeah, my, I get, my concern continues to be that small amounts of money end up becoming large amounts of money, and they become part of the operating system of the city, that then has to be replaced, changed, renewed, and it comes back to taxes. And, you know, we're not suggesting that whatever the surplus is, that we're going to give a tax rebate. I suppose we could, but it's just going to be spent without any real direction from the people who are elected to determine those things.
So just operationally, if we were to, say, lower that 10,000, it would be very full council agendas to approve the number of expenses that we approve on a weekly basis.
That's my point, I don't want a cap at all. Let it just go there, and then when money is picked out of that, we are involved. The 10,000, I mean, I'm sorry, what did you say, 500,000?
Right.
Plus the extra, you know, 3 dollars, or whatever it is, right?
So I think you're arguing against the cap right now.
I, yes, that's what I've been doing the entire time. I don't want a surplus. You didn't pick that up?
Well, I, I got that, but I think Rebecca's point is that we don't want this fund to be a runaway.
No, he doesn't want a cap on the 500,000.
Right, and, and that would, that would result in, in no unassigned fund balance, though, is, is that?
No, because this is only being funded by.
Oh, right, right, right.
Right, with one source, right, like, so at the end of the day, yeah.
It would just mean the fund would grow, there are other ways to handle it, certainly, we can look at it when we have financial reports, it's not, I'm not, it's, I don't have very strong feelings, certainly not as strong as councillor Gagnon, so I'm also happy to withdraw the motion, it's not that important to me.
I, I got a question, so has it ever been over 500,000?
We've never had one.
We never had one.
We don't have, like, the, 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 if the fund is basically zero, has been for a while, and we don't have any parameters like a cap on it.
But what we're suggesting to fund it with is the.
Interest income.
Correct, so how, what, what has been the average interest income over the last few years, that if we had this accounting place, like, what, what have been the?
Well, this year was very healthy, previous years, I don't have exact figures, but it was much lower.
Yeah.
So in some years, you can, you can bank on a much lower number being diverted to this, this capital reserve account.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, and, and, and just in case if something happens, it's going to be pulled out of there anyways.
If you guys decide to do it.
Yeah, so it's just, okay.
All right. Just to.
We'll catch up more, I just, I want to make sure all questions are answered.
Yeah.
You know, and, and the, the goal here, I mean, if we don't do this, for example, we can just do, you know, you can always just expend out of unassigned fund balance, it's not a good practice, you know, if you talk to auditors and many others, to keep sort of using unassigned fund balance as a piggy bank all the time for all the expenses that come up, this is a tool to plan for things that do happen, it's like having a savings account, you know, dedicated to, you know, maybe a certain property you have or whatever it is, that we can look to when things happen, and, and things do happen all the time.
Okay. Councillor Gagnon?
I'm just wondering, she was through her motion, but I don't, if I, if we just had more time to think about it and talk about it, I guess, it could always be added later, I suppose.
So there was a motion to withdraw the motion, is the second also withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was for the cap.
Correct, thank you.
That was regarding the cap, and we do have a question online, mayor?
Thank you.
If you would like.
Yes, please.
Mr. Wolfier, can you hear us? You can go ahead.
All right, I'm going to speak because I know there's a delay, I just got muted myself. Another motion got withdrawn, but to me, it sounds like, like I said, said, made sense, and, you know, like, the, the unassigned funds could be used to lower property taxes, and when we take money and put it towards capital improvement or whatever, that capital improvement fund cannot be used to lower taxes, so it seems like what we're doing is we, we kind of trying to, to hide some money because we might look like we are collecting more money than we're using from the residents, right? So if our unassigned fund balance continues to grow, right, and, and it grows to a point where it becomes a, a pretty large amount, that means we're taking more money than we need to from the residents, and taking that money, capitalizing, taking some of the money and putting it into the, on the side, the capital improvement, will make the assignment fund, unassigned fund look like it's not growing to a ridiculous amount, okay? Another, the motion got withdrawn, and also, another question that I had is, how many transaction under 10,000 can the city administration do without coming to the council? Could they do 500, 8,000 transactions? Could they do 200, 8,000 transaction, and that will never come to the council? Again, something that's to keep in mind, but just wanted to make a comment, so that's all I had, thanks.
Awesome, thank you very much, and just for a point of clarification, this is not money that is raised from the tax levy, so this, the money that is in this account is not taxpayer-funded, so I just want to put that, make that clear. Okay, any other comments? No other comments online? Anyone in the room want to make a comment? Seeing none, can I get a vote? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's see, okay, we are now in Resolution 99, 2024.
Austin, mayor, this is the one I'm accused from.
Thank you.
Authorize the appointment of election clerks. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion, second.
Okay, discussion? Seeing none, can I get a vote? All those in favor?
Okay, wait, how many are in favor?
Yeah, raise them up, raise your hand.
Gilli, De Brito, Klepak, and McCormick, and Green.
Just, I'm sorry, just a point of order, chairman, I just realized that I have a contact also, since my wife, it didn't even hit me, my wife is also.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, councillor. All right, so we have two abstaining.
So it looked like all others were in favor, is that correct? Yes, so it's five in favor, zero opposed.
That's right.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinance 12024.
amend the board's committees and commissions ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I was just updating a few items in our boards and committees, commissions ordinance, so historic preservation, based on what we just approved tonight, is moving from committee to a commission, we're also sunsetting the municipal finance committee, of which there's been much discussion about, of how it is not in keeping with our charter, and also, we are extending the housing committee deadline to 8/31/24.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is an ordinance, can I get a roll call?
This is the second reading, yes.
That's the first reading.
It's the first reading.
Oh, you don't need a roll call on the first reading.
Roll call the first reading, so just a vote, thank you.
That's correct.
Getting it.
Only on the last reading, the second reading, all those in favor? Seven, zero, thank you.
Okay, excellent, all right, now we move on to discussion item, this is the discussion of the municipal and school operating budget, I will open that discussion now.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to do a, a quick update before we start our discussion, so you all should have received a handout at your desks this evening, things have changed in just the past couple of days, and I just wanted to review the current picture of where we are, we also spent some time meeting with assessing to get some projections on new valuation, and also where the mill rate may land based on where we currently are. So on April 16th, we came in and presented, you'll see, that's the first line, the 1,449,000, which would have been a dollar on the mill rate, or 5.03%, so since that time, we've had two pieces of, you know, good news, good news from the county, if you will, went from 42 to 31% increase, so that's still good news, even though it's overall bad news, so that's 116,000, and then also, we had updates to our state revenue sharing numbers, so that's an additional 452,000, which is, is huge for us, so that brings our overall increase, when I say overall, that's city, schools, and county, to 880,000, so that's estimated to be 50 cents on the mill rate, or a 2.51% increase overall, our mill rate currently sits at 1990, this will bring it to a projected 20 dollars and 40 cents, so I'm, I'm sure you all know the numbers on inflation out there, they're well above 2.51%, so we feel pretty comfortable, this is a, a fairly good budget at this point, as far as expenses, obviously, it's up to the council what to do from here, but I just wanted to open the discussion with these updates, and that the budget, as it currently sits, with projected valuation, we're looking at a 2.51% increase, or 50 cents on the current tax rate.
Okay. Okay, great, I mean, that, that is, it is good news, we see some of these changes, definitely favorable for us, which is, which is good. Anyone have, anyone have a comment to kick us off? Councillor Finch?
So this increased projected revenue sharing is not something that's guaranteed in future years, so we should be considering this a one-time funding source? Is that a correct assessment?
They're, they're, they're relatively stable, but they do fluctuate based every year on what happens in Augusta, so that's, that's certainly a fair, a fair consideration.
Okay.
Councillor Green?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments generally, on, on this budget and on the budgets that we've had the last few years. I'm really pleased to see these changes because I do not think we should be raising taxes above 2.5%. However, I think it's unrealistic to have a flat tax in an environment where we do have inflation. We've had a number of adjustments in our wages and salaries that have brought us up to par with competitive rates, and that has meant we have a stable police and fire department. We've seen gains in the schools and also in the city, and I don't think we want to backtrack. We had a large increase last year because we didn't raise taxes for, I don't know, four or five years. And there were reasons for that. In retrospect, I'm not sure it was the best choice. It's just not, it's just not feasible. Yes, we need to control costs, but there are some costs that are fixed, including costs that are going up every year. So I would, as I said, I'm very happy to see this. I would like to consider even using more of the unassigned fund balance, which right now is at approximately 3 million over the 12%, which we are, which we have a policy not to dip below. So I think that there are ways that we can deliver a really good budget and good service to the people of Waterville and keep the tax increase minimal.
I agree with Counselor Green and, you know, Counselor Kleepack, you know, made mention during a meeting the other week in regards to having strong schools, you know, attracts more families and more people that want to, you know, I mean, what's the first thing people look at? Jobs and schools. I know that, you know, I'm beholden to my constituents in Ward 1. I listen to them. This is not just me. But I, you know, I go out there and I speak with everybody and, you know, I get, I get a lot of calls and emails. But, you know, when it comes to this budget, specifically schools, you know, and I go back and forth on this a lot. But, you know, I know that I, you know, you know, my child and, you know, hundreds of more children, you know, they, you know, it's changed. You know, the school system has changed his life, changed a lot of lives. So we, you know, when it comes to balancing a budget, I get it, but I'm not going to do it. You know, I'm not going to go against the kids. You know, my bugaboos and the ones, you know, in Ward 1, schools, police, fire, you know. You got to pay people what they're worth. You got to, you got to invest in the city, and that means investing in people.
Thank you. Counselor Gagnon?
People are going to think I became a Republican after I get down today. But I do think that my liberal ideals are to be able to keep everyday people in the city. The city has the highest tax rate currently in the county by a considerable amount, more than Augusta. Maine, as probably a lot of us have heard, has one of the highest tax burdens. I think we're seventh in the nation in terms of tax burden on taxpayers. And it just seems to be no end in sight. There's always good reasons. There's always good reasons. What I would like to propose is a little bit of a different change because I don't think that this council can really sit around and we're not qualified to, you know, take a razor blade or take a scalpel to the budget. We don't know enough about it, you know, and we're never going to know enough about it. You know, what it takes to run the police department, what it takes to run the fire department, public works. And we're talking about a lot of money. But you hear complaints. I hear complaints. I heard today that a neighbor of mine is going to be leaving our area because she, her house, she's going to be selling her house because she can't afford it. She can't afford the taxes anymore, and she can't afford the water bills, and she can't afford, you know, all the things that come with owning a home. My home is backed up to, my backyard borders Oakland. If I was able to build my house 50 feet further back, my taxes would be considerably, considerably less than what they're going to be, which I anticipate being anywhere from $6,000 to $7,000 a year. This increase is going to mean $150 to $200 maybe for the typical homeowner. It doesn't sound like much, but it's never sounded like much, and it just grows and grows, and we get into a big situation, and it's got to go up a lot. My proposal is to create, add a line item to every city budget, every city department that I would call TRY, T-R-Y. Tax relief indexing, or yield, I guess is the term I thought of. And what we would do is, to bring these budgets down to what they were, to keep them flat, then we should add a number, as if we're adding revenue, to that department. And that negative number then will be not then us trying to figure out what those little cuts should be with the scalpel. But it would leave our very qualified and very professional department heads to try to meet that goal. In other words, create a hole in your budget from the get-go and say, you know, if you saved a little bit of money on that tractor, boom, that's where it should go, right? If you saved a little bit of money on, you know, personnel that you couldn't hire until the middle of the year, you hear about things like that. All that type of money just ends up getting sucked up and spilt. Suddenly, new things appear. And I think one of the problems with departments heads have is that they really operate in a silo. They're really worried about their area. They don't want to impinge on anybody else's area, but they really are working on it. There's nothing really that the department heads and the manager can work on as a team. And I think that if we add this to every budget across the board, put a negative number in there based on bringing it flat for that budget, and then let them try to fill it. If they can't fill it, then we'll go overspend, right? But I have confidence they can fill it. It's really not a lot of money. And we can say it's not very much money on the taxpayers, but why don't we just say it's not a lot of money on these department heads? That has tens of thousands of dollars to work with within a year. I'm not making that as a motion right now because I don't think this is appropriate, but that's my idea. Let's try. It might not work, but if we can try it till next year, and we can tell the people of Waterville that we're not increasing your taxes this year. We're going to try this new approach and see if the department heads can come together as a team to make sure nobody has to have a tax increase this year. Might not work. We might have to have, you know, a separate tax increase at the end of the season. And it might blow up, and we'll have to have, you know, a large increase next year. But give it, let's give it a try. Because I don't want to go in and start telling the school department and the fire department what they need to cut. Get rid of that fire extinguisher. I don't know. I don't know. Let's leave it to them.
Go ahead, head Tom before.
We, Counselor Gagnon, respectfully, as Counselor Green indicated, we did try that. We did try that. We tried that for four years. We had a flat budget for four years. We did not raise taxes in the city for four years during COVID. And that led to a 16% increase to be able to catch up with all of the deferred maintenance, et cetera. That, that experiment, you know, the financial situation that that put the city in. Waterville has been the site for this kind of experimentation for a long time. One of the previous administrations under Paul LaPage was notable for their commitment to a flat tax rate in the city of Waterville. And we've had our city manager explain the very reasonable economic reality of deferred maintenance and the cost that that incurs when we have to finally address the fact that the road that many of us live on, the road that I live on, looks like Mars. And I'm happy to suffer that as the city catches up. But eventually, it's going to cost much more for them to tear that road out and repave it than it is to keep up with regular maintenance. The responsible, stable way to run a city is to not have these kinds of experiments where we are having, you know, no tax increase whatsoever, and then we realize that, wow, we are behind the eight ball, and we have to have a large tax jump this year. The responsible way is to, as best as you can, plan in incremental changes from year to year. And if forecasts are that in a coming year, we can have a, we can reduce the taxes or make it flat because that's going to, you know, be within the financial forecast of the city, then let's do that. But, you know, there is inflation, and even in times of when we don't, we're not dealing with hyperinflation like we are just emerging from now because of the distortion to the global financial system from COVID, et cetera. Even in times without that kind of large inflationary period, there's always a fairly stable inflation rate, right? The cost of money goes up. And so I think that 2.5% is a very reasonable, is a very reasonable budget. I do applaud your concern for making sure that Waterville remains affordable and that we're not trying to engineer the population by manipulating taxes or something like that. But 2.5% to me seems like a responsible, a responsible budget to me. I, you know, we can talk about a few of the various priorities in the city, but I haven't. We sat here and listened to each of those department heads come forward. I didn't hear anything in any of their presentations and in true, you know, a relatively bird's eye view of the budget that we were given. I didn't see anything that seemed unreasonable to me. Yeah, my, my concern is that if we, you know, if we are not honest with taxpayers and how a, and the hard truths about how a city as a responsible and public business is run and that expenses go up, but also revenues go up. We're trying to make sure that our revenues keep pace with, you know, the cost of the services we're delivering. That, you know, it is, it is a fantasy that taxes are never going to change. And people need to understand that. Valuations change as well. And so not only, you know, not only do tax rates go up, but then they, the mill rate drops down after valuations happen. And so people, valuation is, that is value, that is asset that is in the taxpayer's hands, right? Now, they're paying taxes on that asset to us, but that, that change in valuation is, that is the benefit that they are getting from living in Waterville, right? In a town that is, is growing or developing.
Counselor.
I want to reflect off of some of what Tom over there was saying. We are, you compare us to the other towns in the area, other towns in the county. Who's smaller, which town per square mile is smaller than Waterville? Okay? We are one of the two principal service centers for the county. We are probably the smallest city in county, depending on which surveyor does the survey, between 13 and 15 square miles. One third of that is tax exempt, so you've got two thirds paying for the whole. I listened to Chief Estes come in, the fire chief. He proposes a way to pay for a truck. He's not out to rip us off. He's trying to find a way to help us get a new truck. We lent him the money for the box and everything to go with it. He paid it back early. Chief of Police did the same thing. He came in with a new way to get new patrol cars that wasn't going to cost us as much. He's not out to dig us. He's doing, he's doing what he can.
I need to make a point of order here. I never suggested that anybody is out to get us in this. People are characterizing what I said in a much different way than the way I meant it, if I can finish.
And I'm, I'm going to let you finish.
So I'd like to have an opportunity to explain this once again to folks.
Let me finish, and I will present it to you. I will let you. But right now, from what I'm looking at this sheet of paper, we've got 3 million over. We could take a million off of that and cover the difference and go with a flat tax. And then next year, everybody's going to want to know, why haven't we got a flat tax again this year? Okay? I don't want to, I own two properties in town. I get an exemption on one. I pay full price on the other. I would love nothing more than get a break, just like everybody else in town. I have advocated for three years that we need jobs and heavy industry back in this town to help people make these changes. We get, I'm not putting down any small business in town. I appreciate the people that are trying. But when we have an industrial park out there on the Traptan Road that's growing nothing but trees and a blight that's what's supposed to be one of the jewels of the city on the Riverwalk, and a tank camp starting to grow again back out behind where Home Depot and Walmart, where do we, I mean, you got to give a little, you got to take a little, but 50 cent, 2.5% is beating the living fool out of what we started with, almost 9%?
Thank you. Okay.
And I appreciate what you're, what you're saying. I would like to see something like that happen myself. But I'm realistic that our department heads do what they can to try and save, to save, I mean, they're trying to save their budget. That way, they have a little money to play with down the road.
I have a question. So my question is, is really looking at, because I do understand the population of people that do live in, the residents that do live in Maine. A lot of them are in a fixed income, so I'm looking at that lens of people on social security, that older folks that are living on that fixed lens. And $250 may be, may not be a lot for us sitting here, but with somebody that is living on a fixed income, that could be a lot. That could be a lot for a tax increase. So my question is, is there any other options that we have that we can lower it a little bit?
So the answer is yes. And I mentioned to you guys that, you know, if you would like just sort of a menu of options of additional cuts the council could look at, obviously, you can cut and change whatever you like, but some, you know, obviously, places that we can identify to give you some, some options to look at, yes, you could drive it down further.
If we can get a copy of that, that'd be awesome.
Right. So I think part of the exercise tonight was to sort of, you know, get a temperature of where everyone is. I wanted to explain where we currently are, but if there's a desire to go more, we can. And we can produce, you know, that list for you, and you can look at, you know, further options. You know, but obviously, anything is on the table.
Yeah, so my, with following up with that question, so like, you're going to give us a list of options to cut stuff. But is there an option without cutting that we can get funds from somewhere else and add to this?
Without further cuts?
Without further cuts.
Well, you'd have to cut to drive the mill rate down. I mean, there's nothing, there's no other, unless you have further other revenue out there that you're generating.
The fund balance.
Yes, you could, you could use more, where were you?
I already proposed that in my opening statement.
Yeah, because that's where I was going after that.
We could use more of the unassigned fund balance.
So there's 2.5 million already budgeted for use in here, which is a big number to use fund balance. Really, ideally, you should be using no fund balance to offset your tax rates, the use of 2 million or 2.5 million. We have it, which is true. We may not have it in future years. So I think what Counselor McCormick was just saying is, in future years, when we don't have fund balance to rely on, that's got to now come from taxation.
Well, and the thing is, that'd be to our detriment as well, because yes, that could be gone, and then this might not be there. be gone and then this might not be there either. I mean, this will fluctuate too, because this is, this is not.
Revenue sharing can fluctuate.
Yes. So, I mean, even, you know, and I get it, but yeah, I mean, it's going to be.
But it's also to allow, so it's, for me, when I'm looking at it as a lens to allow, to allowing like this inflation to kind of like stable, it doesn't seem like it's going to get stable anytime soon. So taxpayers are feeling that. They are feeling that. So I think 2 points, like 2.51 is a little bit. I'm just trying to see if we can like tweak it down just a little bit.
Well, if you, if you draw it down, use of fund balance, this number's going to go up, the 2.51, because we're, we're basically offsetting this with the use of fund balance. So, yeah, any reduction in the use of fund balance below 2.5 million is going to cause this, this number, that 2.51% increase to go up.
So bring that one down.
Counsel, finish.
So my concern is this one-time funding, you know, with this revenue sharing and the fund balance, you know, if things go bad in Augusta next year or the fund balance is low, we'd be looking at a large increase next year. And, you know, I, I think we got lucky this year with this increase in revenue sharing and the amount that we are able to draw down from our fund balance. But, you know, ultimately, I think we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that we're running the most effective government that also gives back to the taxpayers. And that does mean looking at the size of government and looking at positions and seeing whether or not those positions are effectively serving, you know, the, the community and if they're returning kind of what the taxpayers are paying, paying into them. So I think we do need to look at sustainability and scope of the government. And, you know, that's kind of why the large use of these one-time funds is why I wouldn't support further drawing down of, of the fund balance. I, I, you know, I think we need to look at, at the size of government, if that's, you know, looking at, do we need two code enforcement officers? Or do we need, you know, can we reduce the size of, you know, the city clerk's office or eliminate the assistant city manager or even something as, do we need to have the library open full-time? I think these are conversations that nobody really wants to have because there are people attached to them, but if we have positions that aren't effectively serving the government, we kind of owe it to the taxpayers to have those hard conversations and keep our taxes lower, not by using one-time funding, but by having a more effective government.
Counsel, speak back.
We have had some very difficult conversations around all of those topics that you raised. For example, code enforcement, do we need two code enforcement officers or, or one? We, if, if for anybody who's been following the council for a long period of time, you will remember those conversations that we had. We heard pretty compelling testimony from Dan Bradstreet about the amount of revenue that the city is leaving on the table and his inability to, you know, meet all of the responsibilities of code enforcement because he was only one man. You yourself tonight wrote, raised the issue of a code infraction by one of the, one of the businesses on Main Street tonight. So, and I'm not going to go through the litany of, of suggestions you made there, and I'm not also going to suggest that it's not worth continuing those conversations because things evolve, city evolves, needs evolve, and, and there are times when, you know, it's, it's good to revisit topics. However, if, you know, what, what is the kind of narrative that we're trying to craft for the city of, of Waterville? We've, we've talked earlier in the, in the budget season, we talked about what are, what are some needs, what is a wish list that the city administration had, and one of them was communications, right? The city is trying to craft a message and, and image. Waterville has had all kinds of different reputations in the area over the years and some of them are good and some of them are not as flattering. And so as we're trying to reinforce the, the narrative of a positive, vibrant trajectory for the, the city of, of Waterville, you know, slashing the hours of one of the, you know, most prized possessions in Waterville's civic life, the, the library, that's not really in line with that, that kind of narrative. And it's also not in line with what my constituents at least want. My constituent, and I have heard from them, and I can give you names and quotes if you'd like. They are, they are very adamant about wanting city council to support services like the public library, specifically the public library. And there are, I've, I've heard from multiple people that they are, that do pay attention but don't come to the meetings, that they want us to support the, the part-time positions that are in this budget for this year in the library. There, there are other things that we could discuss, but I, I just want to be mindful of what, how what we're doing is facilitating the kind of story that we, we want to be told about Waterville.
How do you get to sustainability if you're not willing to cut any positions? Are you just going to keep hoping that there's one-time funding? I mean, we have to have these hard conversations.
Yeah. And we will have that hard conversation next year. Right, this year, we have 2.5% increase, which seems responsible to me. And next year, we can deal with the financial situation from the State House as, as that situation emerges.
Yeah. Okay. Listen, the purpose of this was to, you know, to, we've started off this process a little over a month ago. We, we had each of our department heads come in, explain their budgets, we asked questions and so on and forth. Tonight, we held the public hearing. We heard some, some comments from members of the public. We received some, some, some emails and things of that nature. But what we've not heard is, is what we've not had, the opportunity to have a conversation as a council to see where we felt, you know, this particular budget is at. So the discussion was really to kind of get, you know, a feel as to where, you know, everybody was thinking about. You know, we have a budget, the first vote of the budget is on June 4th. So if there is a, an amendment or something that you want to make to make an adjustment to this budget, then, you know, June 4th would be the, the time to do it. So if you have conversations, if you have ideas that you want to run by, you know, the city manager, see if it, if it's, if it's pleasurable or, you know, plausible, then great, let's, let's go ahead and take that time to, to go ahead and do that. And, you know, we'll, we'll look to have that first vote on the, on the 4th.
Mr. Mayor, just one other. Mr. Mayor, I think I must have done a poor job of explaining what it is I, I proposed. And what just occurred is exactly what I think we have to avoid, or we're not, you know, cutting hours or whatever. You get into that, that, those issues. I'm not proposing any cuts. I'm proposing that we pass this budget the way we have it, as is. But adding one line item to each one of the department heads that would offset whatever the tax increase should be based on a percentage, whatever their percentage is of the budget, and hope that they can fill that hole throughout the year, through savings. You know, if they save a few bucks, if they save a few bucks on a, you know, buying a vehicle or something, dump it in that hole. They might not be able to. But if we can treat them as a team, and if they can work on this as a team, and figure out, you know, where there might be savings, what one department might be able to do for a different department that normally have to go out, maybe hire contractor or something like that. You know, there's all kinds of things. I, I ran departments, I ran budgets for many, many years. And you're always taking money from here and putting it there. And when you're asked to come up with a little bit of surplus, I, I was always able to do it. I would, you know, we were once asked to, let's avoid layoffs. This was the last big recession we had before COVID. And our president said, if we can all just pull together and try, and create some savings, defer a few things, shop a little harder, whatever it might be, we might be able to avoid layoffs. The other colleges in the state of Maine had layoffs during COVID, who had none. If I can just finish though, let me, let me just reiterate that. And what I'll do for council is I'll write it up.
Thank you.
So that people can, can see what I'm talking about.
The second time you said it was a little bit different than the first time that you presented. This thing, so, yeah, like, so now's the time, like, so this is the time now, like, we take this back. If that's, you know, like, we're not, we're in a discussion, we're not taking any amendments or anything like, any of that. At this point right now, there's no votes being taken, this is simply a discussion. So, great, absolutely. Write that up. Let's, we'll talk about it on the 4th. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one other point I want to throw out there, just so as people are looking at this budget. So currently, $116,000 represents 10 cents on the mill rate. So if we're 2040 and say you have a goal of getting to 2020, that's, you know, that's $116,000 times two that you need to find. So, and also I'll say, you know, if there's some collective council goal to sort of get to a certain number, and you want to sort of give administration that kind of, you know, directive, we can, we can find, you know, ways to get to that number based on, you know, $116,000 is 10 cents on the mill rate. So just a good number to have in your minds as you're looking at, at the budget from here on out. And if you're paying attention to the tax rate, that's, that's what it is.
Excellent.
I have just one more thing to say, and, and that's to remind everyone that for the last, as our auditor presented a few weeks ago, for the last five or six years, we've, we've used 2 million of the unassigned fund balance and we've returned it. So, you know, this is one reason that makes me confident that we could add a little more rather than adding the taxes. And I, and the other point I, I want to make is that I think we can look for more revenue too, not from the tax base, but from other sources like grants. And, and that is something that certainly the city team can do.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. With that, we are now.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, Mr. Boffey has had his hand raised. I don't know if you want comments during this section or?
This was, this is a council discussion. This is not a public discussion. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. Okay. So we are now in, we are going to go to executive session. If I can, and I can get a motion to, to that. Well, I, I'm sorry. The, the motion needs to be pursuant to one MRS 4056E and one MRS 4056E consultations with legal counsel and acquisition of real estate, real, real estate property.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And folks, we're not going to be taking any other votes. We're going to come out adjourned, so there's no, if you want to hang around, great. But if not.
All those in favor? Thank you.